Well, call our January thirteenth meeting to order. We have a roll call list. Liz, you're taking over.
What's that?
You're taking over for the big guy.
I'm taking over. I'm wondering if that's why everybody's here.
I think that's why, I do.
I think so, too.
Yes, they wanted to give you a warm welcome and to you.
Congratulations, Mary Liz.
Way to go.
Yeah.
Definitely well deserved.
You better watch it. He might be listening in, who knows?
I'm sure he is. He'll be watching it on YouTube.
Yeah, he may be on YouTube.
Anyway, we'll move on. Is there any public comment today?
I did not receive any, any requests from the public, so.
Okay. Well, everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from our December meeting?
Yeah, I moved to approve.
Motion and move, or second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. All right. Bills, if you would, take a peek at them.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify one thing. The, the West Payment Center, that's our zoning and planning report that we get monthly. The November bill was on the December meeting, however, we got a pass due notice. Apparently Steve paid October and December, but didn't pay November, so that's why it's not here again.
November, December, very good.
Yeah.
No other questions?
You heard of last, that was our dryer going off.
Okay.
Trying to isolate the house.
You're bad. Entertainer motion to approve our bills.
I moved.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Mary Liz, would you do the communications for us, please?
I will. We actually had no letters of support this month. This is the downtime with the grants, so. We had six Chapter 102 permits to review, and that's basically it.
Okay.
Okay, these are for all projects we've been either looking at or.
Or coming down the pike.
Yep, very good.
Yep.
Good. Let's move on to all business, transportation.
Okay, well, this is.
I gotta ask you, how do you like all those guys at PennDOT?
Oh. They're gonna take some getting used to. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, they're a different breed. I worked there for a little while.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Good for you. And if you need any help, ask Johnny Poshes.
I'm gonna write that down. Okay, so before Steve left, he did the fourth quarter invoicing for 2021, and then we worked together on the first quarter for 2122. Quite interesting, quite interesting. Um, actually, we have an issue with the fourth quarter. He's asked, Steve's actually coming back next Friday. We have to try and figure something out. He went over budget on one of the categories, and now the whole budget is off by a dollar.
Oh.
And we gotta go back and fix it. So before we could submit the first quarter, we have to get that fourth quarter resolved, so hopefully, you know, Steve's gonna help with that. Um, we had, we have upcoming, we have a combined upcoming MPO meeting on the 26th, and we have a tip meeting on January 18th. Again, they're going to be virtual. One thing I'm learning about PennDOT is they like to have a meeting before a meeting. So every time there's a meeting coming up, they have to have a meeting before that to make sure they know what they're talking about. Um, the bike study, the final payment was approved by DCNR, and Luzerne County is now in the process of reimbursing us for their half of the plan, so that is pretty much wrapped up. Under systems planning, the UPWP program for 22 through 24 has been finalized. It was advertised for any public comment. We have not received any back, but it will be adopted on the January 6th combined MPO meeting. Okay, um, I did attend the virtual PennDOT Connects committee meeting on January 6th. That is the statewide group that does the municipal outreach to the, you know, to the local communities on PennDOT projects, so that was, that was interesting. They're hoping to do some workshops with the local communities in the spring. Right now, they're hoping to do hybrid, but who knows with the, the virus, where that's gonna go. We had a virtual meeting with Senator Casey on January 7th, and Brenda was also on that to discuss the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. He was just looking for some input on the act and the, you know, priority projects that we were looking at. I thought it was a very well, a very interesting meeting. Brenda, if you want to say anything more?
No, I, I thought it was, it was a very good meeting, so it was with the, the MPO, the Lackawanna, Luzerne, and, and we kind of went over priority projects that, that were already on our, our plan. And, you know, we did discuss that, even though there is a large amount of money that's coming through the infrastructure bill, the, the infrastructure needs far outweigh the amount of money that is coming through. So, you know, it, it will move projects the way it works. You can, it'll, it'll move them along faster, and then others can come on. So, so that's really where we're gonna, we're gonna see it. It's, it's, it's wonderful investment, and I'm glad it's happening, but it's not gonna fix all our infrastructure needs, but it will most certainly help us move things along.
Right. Yeah, I think it works out to about 20 million a year for the next five years to, to our MPO for highways, and then I think there's another, another 12 million for bridges.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. Plus you have a whole bundle of the, of the money out there for sewer, water, airports, rail, okay.
And one of the things that we did talk about, there are going to be competitive pots of money, so, you know, we're most certainly gonna look to go for those as well.
Good. Great.
Very good. Very good.
Hopefully they'll get that done sooner rather than later. Okay, good. We have a new guy coming on.
Uh, yes, we do. Bob Kenny. He's starting from time the 24th. He still comes on every, every Wednesday, and as a matter of fact, he was here yesterday. He is going to be our bike study rep, and he is actually, we said that, an avid biker. He bikes up from Hanover Township every day. Yesterday, yesterday he was here a little bit early, and I said, you're early, and he said, yeah, I took the bus today. So you didn't want to bike up in the 10 degrees. But that's good. He took the Luzerne County Transit from Wilkes-Barre up, up to the Intermodal Center here, and he actually has a second bike that he takes on the bus with him, and it's all, it's got like 16-inch wheels, and it folds up into like a case that he could carry and assemble. So he is definitely a, a biker, serious about it. Yep.
Yeah, and this position, so the senior planner, and we, you know, we did take the recommendations of the board to revisit the structure of, of the department, and you know, the positions, the way that they were set up before have been set up for a very, very long time, and it didn't allow us to be competitive within our hiring. So we did combine some positions. We created the senior planner position. We have Mary Liz's old position, regional planner, and Mary Liz has, has moved up to the transportation planner manager, which will oversee the, the whole department. And then we also have another transportation planner position available, and then we have the intern positions where Bob actually started out as an intern, so you know, we're, we're hoping that this will allow us, you know, to, to have a good structure in place for us to be able to continue to move forward and, and support the regional planning commission needs.
Brenda, do you have enough staff?
Um, well, we will when we fill the positions. As, as we know, it's, it's very difficult to find, you know, someone with, with the background that we're, that we're looking for. The good news is that, you know, we have increased some of the salary, so that will help us when we're, you know, to be competitive when we're going out looking. So we will be advertising shortly. We have a candidate we had interviewed before who we're going to interview again. She may be a fit in one position. So once we get all those job descriptions for the advertisements, we'll, we'll circulate that through the board, and if you know of anyone, you know, we much appreciate if, you know, you can, you know, pass those job descriptions and advertisements along to help us to fill those positions.
Great. Good job.
We've actually had the transportation planning position advertised since, I want to say, what, late, late October? And we still haven't gotten, we haven't gotten one.
Wow.
One application. And we actually put it on the PPA website, and.
I was just gonna ask that.
Yeah, yeah, and I actually sent it to Ted at DCED to see if he, you know, knew anybody.
I think you were gonna reach out to the schools, too, right?
Yes, and, and actually Bob took, took the job description. He was gonna give it to his advisor to see if there's any students at Bloomsburg that, you know, that graduating soon that might be interested as well.
Good.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to work?
No.
Yeah, anywhere.
You can't, you can't find people. It's amazing.
It is.
Unbelievable. Okay. Any other questions on transportation? Let's move on to SAPA. Good news for this.
Good news. Scranton, you know, Scranton Planning has recommended to council that the ordinance be adopted. Donnie King actually sent it here for us to look at again. We had looked at it back in March or April of last year, but we did another review of it. Talking to Larry West on the phone last week, they were trying to work out a schedule. If all goes well with the advertising requirements and the public hearing requirements, that they're looking at the third reading on February 22nd. So with that, with that, if that happens, we still have Dunmore.
Carol, any idea what's going on at Dunmore?
Well, prior meetings, it was said that they would see what Scranton is doing and then decide if they were going to adopt. I am no longer on council, and it'll be interesting to see how they move forward, hearing about Scranton. I can, I can actually call some of the council people and ask them individually, maybe. But being that I'm not on council anymore, I, I don't know how the new people feel also, so. If, if, can you reach out maybe, Mary Liz, and see if, if the new people want to become more acquainted with the?
Yeah, we're actually gonna send, send them a formal letter.
Yes.
Oh, Brenda, that would be great. Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, if they have any questions, most certainly, you know, we, we can answer those for them. But as soon as the advertise, Mary Liz, is the advertisement going in the paper yet?
No, I haven't seen it yet, but.
Okay.
It'll be shortly, though.
As soon as we see that advertisement, then we're gonna send the, the letter over, the formal letter to, to Dunmore to, to get their decision, so we can.
Very good. Thank you.
Carol, who are the new people?
So we have, uh, uh, I have to think now. Catherine Oven and O'Malley, Trip O'Malley.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't really know Trip's first name. I can find out for you. I've known him since he's very young, but only this trip.
Carol, thank you. John, thanks for your help on Scranton, too. I know you've been always up there pushing and talking to Donnie.
Well, Donnie's real thing was, he actually did another review of the ordinance himself, and he just wanted to make sure he could clear up any things that he saw that were in the text of the, in the body of the ordinance, so we didn't have any issues once it was passed, because he's, he is acting zoning now, so he spent some additional time on it, you know, to make sure that it was, that maybe something that would could just be a permitted use in a certain category, rather than making people go through hoops or something to get something passed, you know? So he did a nice job on it.
Good. Right. Thank you. Well, let's hope we get this wrapped up in the next couple of months. Okay. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, and then if, you know, if, if Dunmore decides that they're not going to adopt this, and we, we do need to go back and reassign, there's probably only two or three land uses. One of them, of course, is the landfill.
Right.
We're gonna have to figure out where they're gonna go.
Yep, that's not gonna be easy.
No, it isn't, but, but hopefully the group, you know, we got eight, so hopefully that, you know, they'll move forward with it, and we could resolve that.
Uh, Jerry, you'll take it in Clark Summit, won't you?
Absolutely. We've got lots of room up here.
You got a spot for like a, a half acre landfill there, don't you? Okay.
We, we have another solution for that.
Good.
We'll just wait to see how it lands on its feet.
Anybody have any other questions or comments on our?
Call from the A000.
Sorry, that's mine. Sorry. Um, any other questions on SAPA?
No.
Let's move on. Oh, rail. I see we have new updated numbers, huh?
Um, yep. We have, the committee really hasn't met yet, but we're working, the, the rail authority's working with Amtrak on this study. They, they're hoping it's done by August of '22. The chamber has been soliciting for support letters to Governor Wolf and the Secretary of Transportation. I know Steve had put, put one together before he left, but we're working on a resolution. Is Brenda still there? Yeah, we're working on a resolution, right, for the commissioners?
Yeah, we'll do a letter and, and a resolution. I don't know if it's something we as a regional planning commission want to do and, and do a, a support letter, maybe. It's something to think about.
If, if you guys think it would be a good idea, we'll, we'll get it, get it in. Yeah.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, go for it.
I see Amtrak's, uh, estimates are a little higher than previous studies, than the latest that I saw? Ridership is lower.
Yeah. Lower than estimated, yeah, I saw that.
Right. Considerable differences.
Yeah, yeah.
And yet they're still behind project right now.
As of now.
Yeah.
As of now. Okay.
Yeah, and we're actually, through our LSA grants, we're paying for that study.
Okay.
One thing I thought was interesting, they were talking about people traveling to New York, but they were saying about, you know, most of tourists and things, but I don't, it doesn't seem like they, from in the article anyway, they took account into the number of people that moved to this area from New York during the pandemic.
Oh my God, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it didn't seem to mention that in the article at all, and, and hopefully it will be looked at at the study, you know? Because that might up those numbers a little bit, because a lot of those people are working from home, and they may end up commuting if there's a train, you know, so.
Right. Where, where did Matt get those numbers?
I guess some from Amtrak.
I think, yeah, I think they were, yeah.
I think it was from Amtrak. Brenda, if you think we should have a letter, or Liz, you think we should do a letter from the planning commission, support, please? Let us know.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think anybody's opposed to that.
No.
Nope.
Good.
Good.
Okay. Any other comments on our rail service? Let's move on to head to mitigation. Boy, you got this wrapped up, Liz.
Oh, hallelujah. They finally approved Gold Ford's amendment. Gold Ford is going to pass their revised resolution on the 18th. We can get that to FEMA, and it will be done. That's the 21. I just put the application in on Tuesday for the next five-year update. We had to do it early because of the COVID money that the state received, and there is, there isn't going to be a local match if we got the application in now. So, and we were also able to put in some advanced plans that we haven't had before, high-hazard dams, cultural resources, ethnic, what is it? Equity planning. And, um, so we're, you know, we're, we're glad that we're able to put in even for more funding to do some more advanced studies, actually a COVID study, man-made and technological hazards, things like that.
Questions?
Chesapeake Bay, no business.
Yeah, Chesapeake Bay's been quiet for last month.
Good, then we've discussed our new.
Yep.
Kenny? Excellent. Move on to our, any, anybody have any questions on all? Let's move on to new business.
I, I apologize. You know what? I, I pay for Zoom, and I still, on, I could not hear the first part of the meeting, and I pay over a hundred dollars a year for the Zoom subscription, so I, I gotta get my money back. So I had to join by phone. This is Chip Merly. I had one question on. I had one question on the minutes, and, and you probably already approved them, but in the minutes, it noted that many municipalities in the county limit the number of principal structures on one lot to one, and noted Blakely Borough, where Mr. Merly serves on the municipal planning commission, is one. And he questioned the ordinance. Basically, what, what I did say is there is a conflict with our own ordinance between the subdivision and land development and the zoning ordinance, where each one of those states that it does take precedent over any other ordinance. So that, that was my statement. And in our ordinance, in our, in our land development ordinance, it actually allows, the definition allows a group of two or more residentials on a single lot.
Yeah, that's the state, that's the state definition. Everybody's ordinance says that, yeah. But, but, and as a matter of fact, I just wanted to bring that up as well, while we're, before we get into these new reviews. I did go back, because somebody asked about the SAP ordinances, the new SAP ordinances. And every single one, all nine, have the same language. One principal structure per lot.
Are you talking about the land development?
No, no, the zoning. The zoning, see, the, the, the land development ordinance allow, defines what a land development is. So if a municipality wants to allow more than one principal use on a lot, it has to go through a land development process. That's what that's saying. But the municipalities are well within their rights to restrict just one principal use on a lot.
I agree with that, and on the land development, when you do submit it, you could put two residentials on a defined lot as far as land development goes.
Yes, if the zoning allows for it.
If, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then again, zoning says it takes precedent, land development says it takes precedent.
Yeah, well, that's.
It, it, the zoning takes precedent, yes. Yeah, that was just an argument for a property owner that didn't want to go through subdivision process for whatever reason. Yeah. So it'll be interesting to see where that goes. I haven't heard anything yet.
Um, any other comments?
No, thank you.
Chip, does, does that adequately address the minutes for you?
It does.
Okay, and so you don't need any revisions of the minutes?
Uh, not, not really.
Very good.
Very good. Okay. Um, let's continue on our development reviews.
Okay, um, Bob has actually done all of these, except the ordinance amendment reviews. I'm still signing them until he starts full-time, but he's actually done all these reviews. He does a really good job. First one to discuss on page nine, lands of Coslo and Fell Township. This was kind of a subdivision that we didn't quite understand what was going on. It was a piece of property being subdivided in a large floodplain area. This is up near the Crystal Lake section of the township. Accessing it through a 20-foot easement off of a private road. So we're not really sure what was going on there. There was no sewage modules, no indication what they were doing with it, no seal, no zoning information, and again, the private road actually accesses PennDOT, and, you know, there was no information on the HOP as well.
I have a question on that one. This is a flag lot, correct, Liz? And it's a flag lot.
It's a weird-looking flag lot. It's a flag lot off of a, you actually go off the, off of the state road, the Crystal Lake Road. You go down this private road so many hundreds of feet, and then to the left is a easement that goes back to this area, which is a big floodplain area. So I'm not really sure what, yeah, it, it's a weird-looking flag lot. It's a flag lot off of a private road. It's not even off of a public road, so.
Right. And in their, which I wasn't able to look up, is the definition of a lot something that has to come a public?
Um, it may or may not. It may or may not. Some, some of the rural communities allow for you to access off private roads.
Thanks.
So it may be perfectly fine, but we just didn't know what was going on with that lot.
John, you have a question?
Okay, without having a, a map in front of me here, is this, is this parcel land locked in access to another property? Or does it, is it, does it touch the highway itself? Or is like the second lot?
Remaining, I think the remaining lands did touch the highway at some point.
Okay.
Yeah.
But there's an easement through these lands that get to the subdivided parcels.
To another, to the adjacent property. Yeah.
Yeah, crazy.
Yeah.
20 foot is wide enough for anything.
It's a 27-acre parcel off of a 60-acre parcel, so it's not, you know, it's not, but I don't know if they're gonna build, or if they just, maybe they're gonna dedicate it to the conservancy and, like, you know, but no information.
Well, that.
Because I know, I require on, like, well, at least, like, if somebody, any subdivision or lot consolidation in the city, I ask for, on the plan, I think it's required, part of the, the ordinance is the reason for what they're doing. So they have to put a statement on there, like the subdivide, the lots, or to consolidate them, and what the use might be, you know? You can do land, you can do land only right now.
Right.
But, you know, somebody comes in later on, they have to, they'll either have to go through building permit for residential or land development for, you know, whatever.
Right. Right, and they may have discussed this at the township meeting, but didn't bother to tell us, so we.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and that's, that's nothing new.
Yep.
Yep.
That is your first comment.
Yeah, okay. Next one, page 17, the asphalt batch plant in Archibald. Um, I actually believe this is the same company that was looking to do it in Dixon City.
Yeah, it is.
And then they went to South Abington Township, I guess Archibald's the third time's the charm. Um, they're putting it up in the, the, the power of Paula, Power Boulevard up there off of Archibald Mountain. There was a number of variances requested. We did not get any indication yet from the zoning hearing board there whether they've granted them or not. The other thing that we found, we found really odd was that they were basing their parking on a warehouse, which it really isn't. I mean, it was really an industrial use. Again, no seals. And then the zoning section was actually left blank.
It's just a comment, there, there was a zone hearing on that, and, and the zone hearing approved the, the hardships.
Okay.
And the use was not a hardship. I mean, that, you know, that you.
No, that's an allowable use, right, right.
allowable use in an I-2 zone.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. I was just curious why they were basing their parking spaces on, oh, considering it a warehouse. I don't know if it was an error, or if there's something that, that they were trying to do there. And the parking requirements, the parking was pretty similar, you know, for either one. So I don't think it really would have mattered. I don't know, like I said, it was just a, an oversight.
I mean, from my experience, the batch plant is really a high-traffic area. It's just, you know, trucks in and out with the materials. I mean, you know, it, it's not like it's, you're going to Walmart or something like that, or whatever.
Right.
Employees are, there's not a million employees either, you know?
Right, there wasn't, based on the actual building that would be there, there wasn't a need for a lot of parking.
Okay, and, and the truck traffic is prohibited going down Salem Road going into Archibald, so it could only go on and off the industrial highway.
Right, right.
That takes a lot of citizen complaint out of it, right?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, continue, Mary.
Yeah, and the last one is 29, which is the Scranton zoning, and again, just a lot of, some typos and stuff that had to be addressed, which, you know, not an issue. A couple of definitions were duplicated. There, actually, the section on the cell towers was, appeared in two separate articles of the ordinance, which I think was just an oversight. The last one, the, the sign regulation, I, I always kind of try and make this comment in light of the Reed versus Gilbert Supreme Court case, where basically they said if you have to read the sign to regulate it, your ordinance is unconstitutional. So I know Scranton had a, above and beyond what the other SAPA communities were putting in their ordinances related to signs. The rest of them are a kind of base just on location and, um, building materials, whereas Scranton actually listed different kinds of signs, political signs, business signs, this sign, that sign, um, could be challengeable. I mean, I understand why they want to regulate it, but, you know, and it's perfectly fine to do that, but if it's challenged, it may, it may not hold up.
Anybody have any other questions, comments on our development reviews? No. Hearing none, any kind of motion to approve them?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
Second. Second to that, Carol?
Yes, thank you.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion's proved. Good. Development's proved. Uh, next item on our agenda, election of officers for 2022. Do you hear any nominations for, let me see, we have three, chairman, vice chairman and secretary. Right now, I'm the chairman. Rose is the vice chair and Cindy is the secretary.
Just, just to comment, Harry. I have served as secretary and vice chair of the commission for a number of years. And I think because we have several new board members, I would be happy to step back and allow others. For example, Carol is no longer serving on council. Perhaps she'd be interested in stepping up to serve as an officer. So I'm being nimble and flexible about this. I remain interested in serving on the commission, but I'm happy to free up my seat for another commission member to serve.
Thank you.
Rose, good. Very good. I will do the same. Anybody would care to jump in, please do.
And we're happy to serve as mentors.
I'll be like Steve Patoniak, I'll be in to help you.
Yeah. I don't mind studying the secretary, it's not a big deal, but if anybody wants it, that's fine, too.
Very good, okay.
And did you say you're vice chair?
I'm sorry, Carol.
Is is the vice chair open or it's not open?
All, all of them, all three are open.
All three.
Okay, I I would be interested in vice chair if that's something
This is, this is a very informal nominating process we're running right now. You know that.
Okay. Okay.
Carol, Carol is willing to serve, all nominated for vice chair, chairmanship.
I'm second nomination.
I would second it, yes.
Vice chair or chair?
Vice.
Vice chair.
Either one, I mean, you really, either one. Carol, would you like to step up to the chair?
Yep, yeah.
I, I don't think so.
I mean, it's not a heavy lift. This is not a heavy lift commission, right, Eric?
That's only because staff, as you're so well prepared.
I mean, you just, it just runs itself, Carol. So if you, you know, if, you know, your experience on council and everything, if you would like, I'll withdraw my nomination as vice chair and nominate you for chairperson.
Well, thank you, okay.
I'll second that motion.
I mean, why not? This, we hear a second there.
Second.
Her second? Are there any other nominations?
No.
Are you kidding me?
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So is that for vice, is that for a chair and vice chair or just chair?
That's for chair.
Chair.
Cindy, would you consider serving as vice chair?
Yeah, if somebody wants the secretary one, though.
Okay, I move, I move to nominate Cindy as vice chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, good. My second, I'll with the first second call.
It's like, are there any nominations?
Right?
Right, any other nominations for vice chair? None, closing nominations, all in favor, Cindy?
Aye.
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 I guess, yeah. I mean, for myself, yeah. I wouldn't want chair this time, my schedule's too busy, but I would, I would be okay with vice chair.
For vice chair, excellent, good. And secretary, one last position, come on, going once, going twice. Feel like a huckster up here.
Who's treasurer has?
Is there a treasurer? No, we have no treasurer, I don't, I don't believe it.
We have don't treasure all money, right?
We don't really have money to, yeah.
No. Well, except for that big check.
We nominate Mr. Merly for for secretary.
I was just gonna say that.
I I was the worst secretary in Archibald Borough's history when I did it for two years. So they, they, they got me out by making me chair.
I really don't have to do anything because we do the minutes here and everything. Maybe sign a few documents.
They prepare all the minutes and documents.
It's just signing of documents.
A test.
Penn Dot stuff and things like, yeah.
I'm willing to volunteer for the secretary.
Sign and then the secretary.
Jerry just said she would volunteer for secretary. Okay, nominate her.
I'll second the nomination.
I'll draw my nomination to chat and I'll nominate Jerry.
Excellent, second. Second. Second, are there any other nominations for secretary? Hearing done, we'll close the nominations, all in favor of Jerry Secretary? Aye.
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 Nominations are closed, we have no other officers. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Carol, Carol.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is our secretary.
Thank you so much.
Very good, tremendous, guys. Thank you, thank you.
Oh, women, I must note there, so.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. Kind of like our department now, Mary.
Kind of like the department, too, yeah.
I don't want to make a comment. I I just want to thank Harry for his leadership because he's done an outstanding job.
Absolutely.
It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure. I'm not going anywhere, please not.
No.
No, Brenda?
Comments? Any public?
Comment, Harry.
No public.
Sorry, John?
I just want to make a comment. It, it, you know, Brenda, with that be your job or I don't know who, but is there any way you could get through the county public relations or press guy? Just a little thing that the planning commission reorganized and list the new officers and members, maybe? Because nobody even knows we exist.
Sure, and we can put it on our website and and we are streaming live on E C T V. So, you know, it is public, but we can most friendly do something, yes.
All right. Yeah, well, the way the public sees how we did these nominations, right?
It was very open and democratic.
We're a very transparent
It was all open, there was nothing behind closed doors. We voted publicly. Yep, we're good.
Exactly.
Very good, very good. Hey, I want to thank all of you. Is there any other comments, questions we have?
I I just wanted to let the board, let the board know that in Clark Summit, we just appointed a new solicitor, attorney Mary Claire Hayes, who is the first woman solicitor ever in Clark Summit. Girl, so we're really proud to have her on board. So we're, we're moving up the ladder, ladies.
Great.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
And speaking of ladies, speaking of ladies, I I need to comment that Brenda and Mary Liz have done an outstanding job and Steve as well, but I just want to focus on those who are present today. Thank you for a job well done.
Absolutely.